United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, do we have any citizens comments as you can cage?
No.
Okay, and if we could please have roll call.
Mark Cizerow.
Here.
Brian Dodson.
Here.
Brian Quinn.
Here.
Keith Riegerberg.
Here.
Amy Swall.
Here.
Lindsay Spencer.
Here.
Terry Charles.
Here.
Thank you. We can have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes, that moves this into our superintendent's report.
Thank you. So first off, tonight we have Dr. Tripphammer with our annual acceptance of the St. Louis Virtual Campus Program.
This is it, last hurrah guys! Okay, um, so we've kind of, kind of worked in reverse. I think I asked Lindsay to sign the document. It's the agreement that says Brentwood will participate in the St. Louis Virtual Campus. This is that kind of independent little virtual campus that our friends at Ladue and some other school districts have joined. They offer, right now I think we're up to like 12 classes. They're really niche classes like Chinese and differentiated equations. Even where like, even our bigger schools in the area just don't have enough students to, you know, have a class. So it's, that's really kind of been the purpose it serves. To be super honest, it's an, we offer it to our kids. No one signed up yet, but it is, it's nice to have in our back pocket. So really what tonight is just continuing, if we ever do have a child, that would be, it would be appropriate for them to take one of those courses. It would allow us to do that without jumping through additionally. So, and plus, Dr. Zagora will be a board member of that, of that virtual campus. So it's, even though we don't have participation, I don't think it's a bad thing just to have as an option for kids. So really it's asking for approval for us to continue being a member of the St. Louis Virtual Campus.
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Louis Virtual Campus Program as outlined. Second.
Discussion?
There any changes in the contract since last year?
Um, I think the only thing that changed was they added, I think we added two classes this year and I, for the life of me cannot tell you what they are. But operationally it's all the same, tuition's all the same. It's, it's trying to expand. Each year we are able to add just a few more classes. But that's the only change we've made.
So is this only during the school year or is there also, is also offered in other classes and teachers through the summer?
I don't know about summer. My, I'm going to go for real Chinese. I think it's.
Uh, no, yes, it is only during the school year as of right now. Um, we write, uh, we pay teachers to write the classes during the summer. But we only offer them during the school.
And so what is the cost to us whether we have a student or not, or is it?
It's per student. So right now it's.
So if we don't have any, no cost?
Yeah, it's cost neutral right now because we don't have any students. And I, we're trying to be in that, I think it's that price point of like launch, like maybe $300 or so per class if a child were to enroll.
It's less the more kids enroll. The number, so it's not a set number.
Right.
It's based on fee for each teacher plus per student cost. And so honestly, the more kids enroll, in there is actually measuring the cost. Um, of the courses, so we can't give a definitive what it is, as Alex said, in the price point of a launch.
And then the courses, I would believe, I guess, are, they're in with all the other courses that we offer and it's somewhere on the website.
Yeah, Melody, uh, Dr. Tomiklo has, has the link and has the list of courses that are available.
Of the eight schools that are part of the consortium, what's the utilization between all of the schools?
My, I'm just going to tell you off the top of my head, my assumption is that Parkway is kind of like the hub for the, for this school, for this campus. So my assumption is that Parkway's probably got the bulk of the students there. Uh, Dr. Zalinski can probably speak to Ladue on their level of participation.
I was just curious about.
I don't really know, to be super honest.
I would say it varies. Valley Park has some uptake in students as well as Lindbergh is a big one that participates. I would say they're probably the two largest upside Parkway.
Yeah.
Ladue, we also operate and we've been trying to find a way to market it. And I assume that we don't have any uptake either. But it is nice to have these options for these classes if it doesn't fit any kid's schedule to be in person, or if it's something that they'd like to try. Because many schools can't offer these kind of courses.
How, how long have we been doing this?
Uh, this is our second or third year, I believe.
This is our second. We just finished our second year. The first year there were like three courses. And I think we added, we added Chinese too and American. And then next year we're adding American Sign Language and Differential Equations. As two of the new ones for extra.
So yeah, we're going in on third year.
So each year we're trying to add one or two courses. You see, Calc III is one that we offer virtually.
So what are the different, the main differences then between Launch and the Virtual Campus Program? Is it just the classes that are being offered?
It's really just the classes that are being offered. And I would argue too, it's, it's, one of the, one of the points that we really tried to drive home is that these are St. Louis area teachers. And, um, you know, Launch is primarily Springfield.
Right.
Uh, so we thought we had a chance at maybe kind of home brewing our local kind of virtual program. But it's, it's been slow, slow, I mean, that, taking on Launch is, that's, that's a behemoth. So we thought. I, I like this idea though of like trying to find these niche classes that, I don't even know that Launch offers some of these courses.
Right.
And that is actually, I was, I was part of the funding. It was actually Dr. Schwartz, Lindbergh and myself and one of the, we were, it was after COVID and we were trying to figure out how to capitalize on some of the things that we had learned and spread some of these ideas around, like what are opportunities that we can provide for kids that they couldn't access otherwise? And so it is actually purposeful that we try to offer classes that Launch does not offer, or classes that again, most schools can't offer because they don't have. Like even Parkway can't offer Calc III. Like they don't have enough kids.
Yeah.
At one high school to have a teacher devoted to it. So this was just a way for us to be able to, to provide some opportunities and choices for kids that maybe wouldn't exist otherwise, with the idea that if we're local, they could need it in person if they needed to, they would have some of the support. And what we do for.
Is it synchronous learning?
It's asynchronous.
Could we do some kind of media thing about the up and coming new offers this, because like Sign Language would be great for anybody who's looking at medicine or teaching. You know, those would be two great things to have in your pocket and just maybe you were like trying to figure out how to market, like, market the new courses and then say, oh, and here are the ones we, you know, we've always had or whatever and just kind of put it out there because.
We can do that.
I think that would be great.
I agree.
And I'll be more than happy to talk about it because I think that, especially the Sign Language and I know a lot of people have always wanted more math. You know, and we have some families here that their kids take some of their native languages on Saturdays. But if they, their child could continue it here in our district during the school year, maybe they wouldn't have to take it on a Saturday.
Right, yeah.
You know, on Sign Language, I meant to say this the other day, you know, we used to have a cooperative program with, I guess it was the St. Louis School for the Deaf or something. And we had these kids placed here. And it stopped all of a sudden. I think for some reason they decided to get out of it. But when my daughter was in middle school, they all learned some Sign Language.
How about that?
Yeah, so that's something we did.
Capital learned it in kindergarten.
Forgets about that. And since this is your last presentation, I thought we ought to all ask.
What a good question. Really grilled.
I'm so glad Amy's here tonight.
But no, we did use to do Sign Language in kindergarten because Ms. Opal had had a student.
Okay.
And so she learned. And so then she started teaching her kids so that they would at least know some Sign Language, which I thought was really great.
I, it is.
You know?
My granddaughter knows some Sign Language.
Ooh.
So there you go.
Thank you.
I don't.
Are there any other questions? All right, it's all in favor for the Virtual Campus Program? Sam?
Aye.
It's approved.
Alright.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Norred.
Thank you for the opportunity. This is usually the times during the year that I get to stand in front of you for a while and I will try to keep it shorter than I did last time. So what I have in first is budget revision number two for the 2023-24 year. Um, this is the second budget revision that we're bringing forward. Our auditors require us to have a budget that is, for our expenditures that are budgeted. I'm sorry, our expenditures, I mean, are actually, are, do not exceed our budgeted expenditures. Um, at the current time, by current projections, we feel that the current budget in place is sufficient to cover expenditures that are scheduled. What we're asking for is your authority to, or your authorization to transfer those dollars throughout the budget and then report those in our next school board meeting to say how we move those dollars. This should both be with revenues and with expenditures.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the budget revision number two for fiscal 2023-24.
Discussion?
Is this the form that says the VIC proceeds may decrease, the local revenue income increase? Is that what we're looking at?
No, that will be the final budget for 24-25.
So has this always been a, a policy that we have to?
So it's, it's not a policy. If, if our budgets are exceeded by our expenditures, our auditors have the ability by the state of Missouri to state that we are an infringement of a state, it's called selected statistic. So the, the RSO that's referenced in this is actually the guidance or the state statute that we're infringing upon. We don't feel that there's anything that is materially incorrect as far as in total, but we do ask for the authorization to move those dollars in our budget to meet those budget, like if, if benefits or one line item change, we've probably recorded that in another line item. But in August, we report information to DSC based upon where people are within the district. But when we did our initial budget, that may not have been reflected because we found out after school started that these folks are participating at this time in different locations. So that's, it's a really complicated answer. It says that we take 1% of somebody and we divide them out incrementally differently. This gives us the authority to move those dollars.
Okay, but it's a, it's not a new statute per se, right?
No.
It's always been out there. So, okay, so that was, I mean, that's really my question. I haven't seen this before, so.
Twenty-seven years, uh, it's been the same thing.
Okay.
Any other questions for, yeah? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved.
Our next item is the final draft of Budget 24-25. Last board meeting, we brought forward the first draft of this document. Uh, in between our first and final draft, we do make certain adjustments potentially based upon sometimes looking at the final version of our financial statements. Uh, also there's things that we see that are changing, um, in the last month. So for instance, the addition of softball. That's reflected in this budget increase of an additional $1,500. There's also an allocation of furniture for the kindergarten class in McGrath. So that's about $15,000. So those are estimates that are increases. There's also some movement in this budget where we had a teacher, I'm sorry, we had a classroom maid obtain her teachership certificate. So that causes her salaries and benefits to move from fund one into the teacher's fund. Um, that is reflected in this. The largest differences that we're, I want to bring to your attention are when we were looking at the end of this year's financials, we saw revenues are coming in stronger than they were previously anticipated. We want to reflect that increase into the incoming year. Very specifically is interest income. Um, for the last four years, interest income has been very limited. Um, sometimes what we call 15 basis points, so 0.15%. We're going very strongly around 5.2% to 5.3% right now, which is radically different from our historical information. This year we budgeted that somewhat conservatively. We want to increase that and be a little bit more aggressive with that number into the following, into the coming year. VIC proceeds is scheduled to decrease by $30,000. What this is, is this is based upon as the VIC program phases out, the initial number that we had in our budget is based upon consistent funding. This $30,000 is assuming, I believe, 95% of the kiddos will be in on every day and also including the graduations, the most recent. And then new incoming kindergarten class. Um, this is in action. So if you've got any questions, have to address them.
So I'll make a motion to approve the budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 as outlined in the summary. Second.
Discussion? I don't know if the date matters, but it says 6/12/2023 on the top.
Just, I don't know that it matters because lower down it says 24-25, but.
I'll adjust that.
If you need it for any reason.
No, it needs to be correct because that'll be the act, that'll be the date that goes into our audit reports for the final version of the approval of the budget.
So then this year there's no additional VIC kids? Last year was the last year.
Last year was the last, last, 23-24 was the last year we had kiddos.
So the, the $30,000 decrease, it's, we're still going to be able to do what we've done every year, just because we don't have a new one coming in. That's what we think we will need. But transportation or whatever we've done in the past?
We're funded for the VIC kiddos. Uh, transportation for VIC isn't a cost of ours. It's solely the cost of provide what VIC has agreed with the St. Louis County School Districts for what each kiddo's tuition is. So this is assuming 95% of the time, the number of kiddos we have allocated to that program will be in times.
Yeah, we received 7,000 students for, students from the VIC program. And it's actually, uh, the plan going forward is that should be able to increase a little bit incrementally as the numbers go down. Transportation costs will go up, um, just based on volume, but ultimately the plan is that, you know, in the coming years, that should be somewhere more in the 7,500 per student range as the program winds down.
Any other questions? Okay, um, all in favor to the senior budget for 24-25? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is approved.
Alright, thank you. Um, every five years, so generally on a annual basis, you will ask the school board to authorize a contract with our food service management company. Every five years we're required to go offer competitive bid with our food service company. It doesn't necessarily mean that if we're unsatisfied with that company, that we can go offer a bit sooner. But the state of Missouri does mandate or limit us to every five years. Um, what we have in front of you is the competitive bidding process that the state of Missouri requires us to follow. So each part of this step, back in February, we began communicating with Department of Elementary and Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, asking them for approval for each step in this process. And we have to document that, including our advertisement. This is reflection of that final process. So they also require us to rank them. So we're not allowed to go solely, we're not allowed to select a vendor solely based on price. So the point system that's being provided, most of these vendors, there, I'm sorry, the two vendors that were interested had very similar costs. Um, they also had very similar ranking. Um, we had a very comprehensive response from Chartwell's and we also had the more lucrative cost out of the two. Their proposal is no increase for the management fee and admin fee compared to the previous year. So, I mean, 23-24. That doesn't mean that these increases wouldn't go into effect in next year and typically they're limited to the Consumer Price Index for food, for food itself, which is different and separate from the general Consumer Price Index. Uh, we are recommending Chartwell's for a contract between Brentwood School District and, uh, Brentwood School District and Chartwell's. Uh, we, the contract in this current version has been written by Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
I make a motion to approve the food service management bids as outlined for Chartwell's. Second.
Discussion?
So I'm just curious about the waiting. Is that something that the state comes, tells us, or is that something we've done?
So the state tells us that we have to rank it in this method. So the points that are allocated and the type of criterion being assessed is required by the state of Missouri. The voluntary number is the one at the bottom that says support from Missouri Farm to School. We left that at zero. It's not something that would be easily accommodated within our, within the metro area. We would have been able to potentially allocate points accordingly. The, when someone submits their packet for a contracted food service management company, they actually put the tabs in their proposal that align to this format stating how they have met those requirements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we still satisfied with them generally?
Yeah, excellent. Customer service, really a great, we have a great food service manager, um, really above and beyond and meeting individual needs of students with various food allergies and dietary needs.
They've been very proactive with, uh, at least bringing to our attention certain grants that are coming through. So we have a grant, it's roughly $25,000 that we were successful for a piece of equipment at McMoRtoy. It's a county event. Part of us being aware to apply for that grant. Now I'm still responsible for applying for the grant, but the, we may not have been aware of that if Chartwell's as a bigger, I mean, a bigger management team hadn't brought that to our attention. Um, they've been proactive with pursuing several micro grants, which is just, that's part of the base one that's come to our attention.
We participate on our wellness committee as well and are very proactive in providing information to families and to students and it's been great.
They've also donated certain materials to like, the most recently the chili cookoff, they donated, you know, something simple like plates and forks. But that wasn't the responsibility of high school or national law, which is saying, go purchase that.
That's good because writers we had before, it seems like when they got in the door, their service kind of started plummeting for every cookie, but Chartwell's has helped it up pretty well. It's been several years we've had it now, right? How long have we had them?
At least 10. And we did direct solicitation as part of this as well. And so just to tag or carry on to that, we did directly email different vendors to try to get more response rate in this. So the two that we have responding, um, we did reach out to more folks than just this.
Great.
Great. All in favor of Chartwell's contract?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is approved.
Alright, thank you.
You still have, uh, you stay up here and we just need one word?
Resolution for July bill payments.
One more, one more.
Send Alex back.
Sorry, I forgot to listen. Um, so each year we do ask for approval, so, um, there are times where our board authorizes the not having a July meet. And what this, what this resolution does is it allows us to issue invoices during that time. If there's anything that was unusual or unintended within the guidelines that we have in front of you, we would hold those out. Um, we would not issue those. Primarily this is to continue payments for purchases to start our school year. And then also for, so typically like startup materials, curriculum materials, but also construction projects. So our payment applications are typically large bills that were held to the responsibility of paying those, was referred to as that thirty. So we do ask for your authority to proceed with that. This is resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for July bill payments. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that is also approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Alright.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, next up we just have a couple of, these are just first reads of, um, policy changes with one new policy. So first off, we have first read of community use of district facilities. This is one that we have to update every school year. You'll see there's minimal changes to it with really just the years. You'll see that there is the, um, also the removal of the conference space that we no longer own for obvious reasons. But then, uh, the, my recommendation I should say would be to, to not change those other rates. Historically tried to keep those very low and trying to help out since we, um, this is literally for our community that gets the best amount of these, out of these facilities. So, any questions on that for first read?
So the Mark Twain Elementary Gymnasium, will it be as compatible to what we have at McGrath's? I know there was like a 75 and a 90. And I know, you know, I think the McGrath gym is now able to be used for certain size teams or whatever. Will the gym at Mark Twain be the same? Or will that be something we should look at increasing to 90 as well? Or is there not anything really being done to the gym over there?
No, it's being, it's being revamped. So actually I think that's a, I think that's a fair point.
Because you might have someone say, you think that one's not as good as the other and we, if we have them as the same price and they're able to do the same thing for.
I wonder, does McGrath have bleachers that that would be, that so might be different kinds of activities you could have in there?
The bleachers would really be the only difference. The baskets are both regulation size, um, the sports they could contain would be the same. So really the bleachers would be the only.
I, that's all I can think of would be.
And then one says a three hour minimum and one doesn't. So I don't know if that needs to be put in there or not. I don't know how specific this needs to be. I just.
Yeah.
It should be equitable between the both, right?
Yeah.
Are there organizations that are used to these rates and used to using this facility as a, as a mall?
Bellas?
Nobody's really used Mark Twain gym for a few years. Or used High School and, uh.
It'll probably get some interest now, would you mind, what I would anticipate. But I like, I think that's a good catch, Carrie. I think we can, we'll make a note of that. I think that should be the same, the same rate. They're both very nice gyms.
And then our fields aren't going to be done yet at McGrath, but I think maybe we should revisit the $10 event for elementary fields if we're looking at the soccer fields. Once we get those up and running and, you know, I don't know what we may, I know we made decent arrangements with the Y and we reciprocate. But, I mean, if they're.
Like McGrath field once it's all.
Yeah, if and when it's done, that's something we should look at. But I think $10 is probably really, really low.
It is, it is.
If we bring them up to what we want to, what we talked about bringing them up to.
This is the Y. Katie's.
Is that separate?
Yeah. For the field.
Does the Y use our gyms?
Y care, they use it.
Oh, for Y care, that's, that's different.
It's a definite agreement.
Yeah, so they would not be impacted by this potential change.
Correct.
I mean, we could always put a little asterisk next to elementary fields, you know, to be determined for new fields once they're established or something.
Okay, I'll make a note of that. Did you get that, Kate?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, and this one, once again, got a little, some good conversation going. This is certainly a first read. And, and I should say, should have put this out initially, this is not a required policy. So we don't have a, we don't have a deadline on the artificial intelligence use policy. There's not a, any form of a state mandate behind it. But it could be a good, I just wanted you to be able to see that this is out there and then to have a follow-up conversation with Dr. Zelinski. I would assume maybe at the August meeting or whenever you all agree that that would be appropriate. But just to take a look, to see this is obviously a lot of conversation around AI use. And specifically, this policy doesn't really get into the details on how you're able to use it. As you guys, as you all saw, it was more about having a coordinator and to have a yearly AI use plan with some annual reviews and training around that, which I think does sound like ultimately a best practice for a district. But you'll have to determine when the team is ready to put that into place.
So, yeah, as Dr. Lee mentioned, there were a couple emails that we were kind of discussing how Brentwood would address this policy. And what we've already done, what we have planned in the future, and Dr. Zelinski, she's got some experience, will do, I believe. And feel free, you can speak to this, that would be even better.
So we just adopted this policy, but as Dr. Lane says, it's not a requirement. This is work that, in my current role, technology falls under the curriculum instruction department. So I work very closely, the director of technology actually reports to me. So we've spent a year putting policies into, we've been doing a lot of work around our technology plan. And AI was already a part of that. Not kind of learning where we are and kind of figuring out where we are as a district, that is important. But like Dr. Lane said, this policy is pretty broad and this compass is what I would say our best practice is and what we should be doing as a district, which is communication, you can have parents, professional development. And then having someone who's kind of staying abreast of all of the constant changes that are going to come our way. Because AI can be very good and AI can be very bad. And we need to make sure that we're educating our kids and our community on both pieces of that. And so when, through the emails, I think, you know, kind of one of the places that we leaned in, I did already add it to the agenda for the Board Retreat, as we think through like a workshop. I think it could be even broader in the technology umbrella. But that AI being a conversation around having, what are you bringing in someone to educate the board, educate all of us around the positive uses of education as well as some of the pitfalls. As well as, I think we need to, and I don't know enough to know what our plans look like now, but looking at a broader technology plan. Because I also think as adults, we're all learning about what AI is. And as we know, in real life, kids are sometimes faster than we are. I'm learning how to use that. So it will be ever-evolving. But I will say that you feel very comfortable in my knowledge when some of the frozen counts. But I think it's always good to continue to bring in people that know more about AI technology. So that's kind of where we leaned, because we were emailing back and forth. That's okay, and as Dr. Lane said, there's no urgency. This is work that needs to happen no matter what the policy is. But I think the policy again is grown enough that it aligns. So just best practices we should be doing.
Right, and it's a good time to be talking about it.
Well, for my part, I saw this in the definition, it said probabilistic algorithms. And I didn't know what that was. So I tried to look it up, and as best as I can understand, it would cover pretty much all advanced technology, so. And, and this is a question I always ask when I'm here, presentations on artificial intelligence. Tell me the difference between artificial intelligence and leading-edge technology. Nobody's ever been able to, and so I think this, I'm not saying we should be doing that. I'm just saying, I think it's important to keep an eye on this. And I'm glad that you've been thinking about this a lot and all that. And I know at MSBA, they're really concerned about it. So I think they had a desire to crank something out, so somebody to have something in their hands. And, so I don't, I don't know what to do better, but. So what is a probabilistic algorithm?
No, what I would say is I think this is one of the cases of, it's news of people are trying to respond. To your point, Keith, quickly, but you have districts that have blocked all, like ChatGPT, and they've completely banned it for teachers and students. You have other districts, my current, my big one, where like, how about we teach kids how to use it? Because they're going to sneak it even, or they don't. And there's things that for us as teachers and educators, that there's actually some value in efficiencies that it could provide for us. So I think some of this, and things that we think of as AI that we've been using for a long time, that now it's becoming more, I guess, responsive and more intelligent. It's, I think, creating some scares, some fear. And then I would agree that there's, there are things that fall under the umbrella of AI because we've used for a very long time that we just don't think about.
Well, every time I log onto Amazon, it's guessing what I'm going to do, and it's pretty sharp.
So we had, we had two minutes together in a presentation, and it was like, is this AI or is it not? And it was things like your Netflix, like your Jess's thing. And they're like, some of the answers were sort, in sort of is, or like ways, when it tells you the fastest problem. You know, how responsive is it? Not really, but it kind of could be, and so.
So is the chat DPT or whatever, is that where you can put in a certain amount of words and then it can help you with papers and stuff like that? Because see, that, that, I'm old school. But that to me is, we're not teaching our kids to do research anymore. You know, we don't have books, we're losing libraries, we're doing a lot of things. And I'm not saying technology isn't good sometimes, but I just was reading an article yesterday, I can't remember what it was. But it was all about the way we used to do things. Now we should go back to teaching kids fractions and rule, and using rulers, and employees will love you for doing that. And I just feel like old wasn't always bad, and technology can be good in some ways. But I feel like this generation is already a little lazy compared to what we were in, as far as education. I was a big person, I didn't want books being taken away. And a lot of books are gone, and they're only in math and whatever. So I'm, I really want to know a lot about this before I even want to say yes or no. Because I really feel like we're losing our grip on education and the grip that we have to teach our kids.
So I think one of the things that I would like us to do as we look forward is, as I mentioned, is the broader technology umbrella. ChatGPT is an example, many people use it synonymously with AI. It's one very small piece of it. But that's why to me, Ronnie and I, Dr. Sore, and I were just talking about this. Where is that balance of technology? And I think sometimes we've gone too far. But what is our philosophy as a district around, is a healthy culture for technology usage? And then how does AI fit in that? But then how does social media fit into this? How does, I think it's a bigger conversation than just AI. And there's a lot of learning from me as to what reality is. You know, I walk into classrooms now in my current job and I see every little face behind a computer while the teacher's still standing in front of the classroom. And that hurts my heart a little bit, and so there's, I could go on all day about this. There's, it is a bigger conversation and a broader conversation. But I think could be very worthy of a workshop at some point, as well as some work. You know, Sean, if there's a core on myself, it's a, it's a longer-term piece than just this policy.
Well, and once, and once you develop that kind of philosophy of how the district feels about it, I know some, some districts nationally are starting to dive into, once they develop that, then they're looking specifically at curriculum and, you know, even down to individual assignments and coming up with assignments that couldn't be developed through AI. And ones that, you know, maybe they are okay with certain assignments where it's going to get students ready for, you know, the workforce and understanding how to utilize some of these AI tools. But then you're going to have certain other projects that, by the nature of how you develop them, they, they really cannot effectively. And by the way, there's already AI detectors out there that teachers are able to use. And you plug in, you know, a paragraph from the assignment. My son recently had an erection.
Personal experience.
That's why I'm familiar with the fact that teachers can and do figure out when you've utilized AI to answer a question. So there's, there are a lot of pieces to it, but.
I think, I just remember when Google first came out and we offered adaptive education. Like, okay, they're going to Google, let me insert, we have to adapt as well. And so I think there's just a bigger conversation around that.
Yeah, Alex, who was the gentleman that was at our curriculum meeting?
Yeah, that's Mr. Fabio Esposito. He's, he's the professor at Wash U that kind of specializes in AI. And really made himself available to, with the board, with students.
Yeah, I, I had the impression that he'd be very interested in participating in, you know, working. And he seemed very knowledgeable.
Yes.
Smarter than me, that's for sure.
I tried to make it to curriculum meetings with him, and I think I missed him eventually when he was. Yeah, he was at the last one, and I had to leave early and, yeah.
He did speak.
So I would love to have him come back because he, he was so gracious and came back three times. So it is something that he's very passionate about, and he really does want to tell us his pros and his cons. And he's at Wash U, and he's in the education area. So I think it would be great, number one, we're including a parent within our community and having his voice heard. And I just think it's a win-win.
I wanted to offer that I know coworkers in the Brentwood School District had students that were not allowed to use AI, but then the teachers were using AI to grade their papers, and that did not go over well because it was. I think as technology and this technology super cycle continues, we're going to have to really just think about what it means to be human and our philosophies around learning and alongside machines. I know that seems crazy, but I think that we're going to have to really think about how we're hearing ourselves.
I look forward to this broader conversation in technology. It's great that you have this policy, and this, you're right, this is just one step of many to get a focus on technology. I mean, ed tech is what they call it, and they're inventorying applications. I mean, there's, there's financial implications on that and what we use, and there's duplicate tools out there. There's also an information security piece that's very important. And, you know, it would be good for us to think about all of these areas.
You know, one thing that concerns me is that how, I think MSBA needs to take more of a, it says consideration, but what's going to prevent districts from using AI and then getting higher ratings than other districts? I mean, because if you have no policy, one of the other districts, and then we or somebody else had a very strict policy, will that affect ratings of schools? It seems like it should be more of a uniform than just a consideration.
I think there's just so many unknowns right now. I think most policies are broad enough to give that local control piece of state of Missouri to allow for some level of autonomy in the individual school districts as to where their comfort levels are. But I think it's, I think it is very important as we learn that we figure out what, that's why banning it, in my opinion, it doesn't, very cautious because it is the world of tomorrow, we kind of, we have to learn and interact with it as well. So there's a, again, it's a much bigger conversation that you think it's important for us to at least all be clear in the space that we are responsible for.
So specific to this policy, what role typically gets the AI coordinator?
Either your, my experience is being Director of Technology or your Assistant Superintendent of CNI, depending upon the structure of the district. So that would be something that we'll talk to Sean and Dr. Sore. But it's really just someone who's staying abreast of technology. It's not, at least in my experience, it's not someone who's got a whole bunch of extra jobs. It kind of just, it's just like you're monitoring securely and all of the other pieces of technology that we have. This is just kind of one, somebody who's got to be the point person for staying on top of new technologies. So between, and it'll be a conversation that will be on.
And then they mentioned an SRO. Is there a piece also that our SRO will be able to, will be contributing? Or is there something that they, they will bring to this piece of this AI policy as well? I just thought it was kind of weird that that was put in there, so is there also?
It could be discipline-related reasons.
Because it went into like in-school, out-of-school. I mean, it, it really went over a lot of, a broad range of places as well. So that, you know, I just, even the kids were kind of, I've heard towards the end of the year, a lot of kids my daughter's age, just really talking about it. And they weren't quite sure and didn't feel real secure about the AI. And they know a lot more than we do. So when they're a little hesitant, that always makes me hesitant. Because I like to listen to what they're saying. So we won't, this is a read. Hopefully, we don't have to bring it back until we have some of these other presentations in front of us.
So we'll talk about it at our retreats. And we, this could come back in August if we wanted to. And as Dr. Lane and Dr. Zelinski said, it's very broad. So it just allows us to develop some procedures underneath this envelope we decide to do that. But we will talk about it at the board retreat and have some discussion around it first.
And even Libby's, since she has some ideas and has been doing some stuff, if she could also give us her perspective on it, if she's going to be involved. And I'd like to hear someone inside the district too, who's working with it and has some plans of where they want to take it.
Yeah, I think there's some good options for information. Good. Any other discussion around this policy? So this will come back, we will not have a policy meeting in July. So at least for the first one, and we'll discuss that in August.
And that's Super Council report.
Okay, great. That leads us to Board of Education report. And before we dive into MSBA, I, tonight is Dr. Lane and Dr. Trip Hammer's last board meeting with us. So I just wanted to thank you both for your years of service to Brentwood. And enjoy yourselves and your next adventure. And yeah, I just think it's been a pleasure to work with both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
And I do have cookies after the meeting, so stick around. Okay, so that then brings us to the MSBA delegate report. I don't know if you have anything yet, Keith, because I know you've got some activity later.
The summer summit is, is it next Monday? Yeah, in Branson, and I'll be there. The only agenda items for the delegate assembly is election of officers. We actually had two contested elections. So there will be an election for president-elect and the three candidates are Shelley Mantell, Latony Williams, and I've got Gary Grigsby. The first two I know, Gary I don't know. I, my plan is to vote for Shelley Mantell, I've known her longest. Then there is an election for vice president, two candidates are, again, Gary Grigsby, who really wants to be an officer, and Paula Hubbard, who's from Southern Missouri somewhere. And I plan to vote for her. And, and that's, that's all, that's on the agenda.
Thank you for going to that, representing us.
Oh, you're welcome, I'm happy to go.
All right, Special School District's governing council, I think I know you had a meeting.
Yeah, we got a meeting on June third, so I took some notes. The first thing they went over was their CSIP, they gave an update on the current goals. Looks like they're on target for most of them. A lot of it had to do with databases and sharing data and how they shared data between districts and whatnot. Their second one was optimizing resources with data again, and then communication. So they said they were pretty much on target for all three of those. Next year, their three goals are correctly plan for future success of students, then coordinate decision-making processes that are consistent with the mission. And then the last one that I, they spent a lot of time on was making sure that kids that are going from district to district are getting continuum of care. And that seemed to be something that, from what I gather, it was my first meeting, but it seemed to be lacking. I don't know if Ryan, you knew? I don't know if Ryan knew, it's probably been the same.
It's kind of the same, yeah. We've been on that for a while.
Okay, thanks. So then the next thing, their parent advisory council came, they didn't say too much, they just went over new members next year, some members that are outgoing. The thing that I took note of is they went through the districts that parents are participating. And from what I could tell, we, no one from Brentwood has attended over the last year.
Yeah, I, I feel like we had a very active parents a few years ago. And I hope it's been.
Yeah.
We kind of go with, with some, and then we go for a while where we don't have some. And I hope we do really get another one coming.
If there's, how many outreach? Do you, do you want to?
Do you know, can you? So I was like, I know you're here, yes. Can you?
Yes, so I will tell you that our parents are, have been resistant to a PAC, the formalized version of a PAC. I meet with parents on an individual basis and have pre-open access to them as well. And they have access to me and the supports. I have tried to get our parents to form a PAC. They would rather spend, they enjoy being parts of the PTO and all those different aspects instead of the separate piece of it, which I can wholeheartedly support. And so that's why we use some of those other resources. We still actively engage within the different community resources and faces program. And so we're, even if we don't have them active in the PAC, you'll probably see through some of those updates that we do have, so we go through the parent academy, and then we access these supports and resources through faces, which is our community engagement and family resources more on an individualized basis. And part of that has been from the, a lot of the PAC resources, from what the parents have told me, the reason they've stepped away from it is because they've created their own family support type of group and the positivity that they're able to bring on their side. And they have, they feel like they are represented on their parent need appropriately without the formalized PAC.
Thank you.
And we definitely were. I mean, there, there's, I think there's like ten districts out of the twenty-two that had representation of these meetings, so. The third and probably the meat of this meeting was the budget. I think we talked about this last meeting, but in May, let's see, May, yeah, early May, I couldn't make that meeting. And there's been a lot of questions about the budget, and there's been some transparency issues. And Dr. Macklin took over about a year ago, was very thorough, went through a budget. In the budget, they found out that it was basically wrong. There was clerical errors in it, and when they looked at the projection of the budget, it was completely off. That budget was brought to the board and the governing council. And then they caught it and they revised it. So people were concerned that the board saw one budget and the governing council saw another budget, but that wasn't the case. That kind of put people's minds at ease. But regardless, they have measures put in place, they have auditing measures that are put in place to hopefully avoid this in the future. Because there were some glaring discrepancies, so. Dr. Macklin seemed to be trusted, I think in the year he's been there, and Amy, he speaks very highly of you. He said we stole you. Yeah, but he was there, obviously, and the executive team answering questions. He had, I think they had thirty questions on an email, they went through every single one of them. So the, the next issue was the budget. As we talked about the last meeting, they're, they're going to be exceedingly high, they're going to blow out their budget on their expenses. So what they did over the next five years, they're going to reduce staff by a hundred and twenty-eight staff members per year. A lot of that is attrition. But if they do that, it's going to save nine point eight million a year or forty-nine point two over five years. Now, it was brought up that, I mean, obviously, people were concerned about, you know, the education of these students will go down. But the fact of the matter is, is that the number of students has gone down, as well as the, the indeptness, if you will, of the education of these students. They don't need as much attention when you look at these graphs. But they did also say that if anything is compromised in that regard, they'll, they'll quickly address. The last thing is the capital budget. They, like we talked about, they're going to go from seven cents to three cents. That's going to save four point seven million a year or seventy-three point five over five years. And when you have both of those up, it's a hundred and twenty-two point eight million to knock off that. And as Dr. Macklin said, that's going to right the ship. The, the board passed it, and the governing council passed it that night too. So everything is going to go.
Thank you. That was the, that was a lot of information.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
No problem, thanks.
All right, that brings us to board committee updates. And I don't believe we've had any meetings in the past month. And we will discuss the board committees at our retreat, just looking at the subject matter that we are looking at within those committees and which board members will be serving on those committees moving forward for this new school year. For upcoming events, as Keith mentioned, there's the MSBA summer summit. We currently have a busy meeting scheduled for Tuesday, July sixteenth. We'll see what things look like. We've also discussed if we had just a couple of things we needed to, to discuss, we could do that at the beginning of our retreat too, would be another option. Because the following day is our retreat. And that is going to be held here.
It is, it is going to be in the library classroom.
So plan for, we have it starting at eight thirty, all day, we'll get to be together. It'd be great.
And then will you give us an agenda before of what we're going to talk about at the board retreat?
Yes. We will get one to you before the retreat, hopefully a few days in. Okay, anything else for open session? I could get a motion to adjourn, it was into closed session?
I move that we return and move into closed session.
I could have roll call, please?
Marks as well?
Yes.
Ryan Dawson?
Yes.
Iris Lynn?
Yes.
Shee Brainerd?
Yes.
Katie Small? Here.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. I, I really do have to do this. I brought a glass.